Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's public hearing. I am officially opening the meeting and officially calling the meeting to order. Attending to my left, Commissioner Leslie Duncan; to my right, Commissioner Bill Brooks; and I'm the chairman, Commissioner Chris Filios. So I'd like to welcome you once again. And I'm going to ask our attorney, Pat Braden, if you would please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As far as my opening comments are concerned, do we have any potential conflicts of interest on the part of the three commissioners? Okay, we do not. Okay, so let me just announce the rules of play before I turn it over to Director Dave Callahan. So the attorney for the appellant, that would be Mr. Scott Foreman, will get 15 minutes to present his case. Following that, people will be allowed to speak or in support of the appeal, that is to say, the appeal that challenges the decision that's already been made by Director Dave Callahan. Each individual will be strictly limited to three minutes. If there are any group presentations, we allow 15 minutes. That individual would be representing 10 people. Each of those individuals, each of those 10 must be present in order for that to take place. Otherwise, it's a three-minute time limit, so we try to accommodate everybody as best we can.
Where's our little light?
Betsy will be our timekeeper. She's got a little timer there.
Okay.
Okay, so Betsy will give you a warning when you're down, when you've got 30 seconds left, okay? And so before I say any more, I'm going to turn it over to Director Callahan so that we all understand how we proceed. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's hearing is out of the ordinary in the sense that it's by statute different from the usual land-use public hearing. There are express process and standards set forth in the code. I have handed you a copy of that before the meeting began. It was at your desk. And I will just touch on a few things that are important for the public to know. The order of presentation is different from what we normally do. I will do this introduction, and then the next up is the appellant's opportunity to make their presentation, and then anyone that wants to speak on the appellant's behalf or siding with the appellant. Then it's my turn, since this is an appeal of my decision, to present the county's case in chief. And then anyone such as Megan O'Dowd or anyone else that wants to support my position would follow.
And I just want to, you know, insert that, that both Mr. Foreman and Ms. O'Dowd should be afforded 15 minutes for their argument.
That is absolutely correct, yes. Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And then the appellant's rebuttal. The one other thing I can think to mention that, again, is just out of the ordinary, and I'll just read the options here. Since this is a de novo hearing this evening, meaning that you're considering this as if it's new, you have everything in the file that we've heard up till now, but new information can be introduced tonight. The other thing you should know, and I'll just read it from the code, is, quote, "In the event the board finds that the department action was erroneous, it may reverse or modify the department action, or it may remand the matter to the director or hearing examiner for further proceedings as may be appropriate." The one other thing I can think to mention, I think you already know, but just because this is a little out of the ordinary, is you can make a decision tonight, or you can take all of the information in and schedule another deliberations meeting out in the future. That's your call, or in addition to these options I just read for you. So unless you have questions at this time, I think it would be appropriate to let the appellant go forward, and I'll wait until it's my turn.
Okay. And Pat, if I'm not mistaken, your recommendation is that we deliberate at a later date?
Based on what I anticipate to happen at this hearing, you know, at the end of the hearing, we can certainly revisit that.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, then. So let me just announce it as I probably should have done earlier. This is appeal, that is to say, APP 21-002. It is a request by the Meadowbrook West Road Association to appeal an administrative decision by Cootney County Community Director, that's David Callahan, approving a four-lot subdivision known as a MIN 20-0057 Ranch at Cougar Creek. Without further delay, Mr. Scott Foreman, the floor is yours.
I'm just admitting, so I'll be with you just a second. Okay, I've got it down. You want to draw it?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Filios and Commissioners. I'm Scott Foreman, 320 East Nider, Suite 204, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I'm the attorney for the Meadowbrook West Road Maintenance Association and its individual members. First, I want to thank you for allowing us to have this second public hearing. I know these are not mandatory, and my clients, and I certainly appreciate you giving us this additional opportunity to present some new evidence to you. And we do have new information for your consideration tonight. I'll assume that you're up to speed with the hearing examiner's recommendation and the evidence that was part of that proceeding. And really, the issues haven't changed, but we are going to kind of focus on what I think are the primary issues. So first, let me kind of eliminate one for you, hopefully. If I can find my mouse. There it is. Maybe this isn't going to work, David.
Keep your scrolling.
There it goes. Okay. Meadowbrook West Road Maintenance Association was formed by National Associated Properties for the Meadowbrook West subdivision development. It's not a plat. This was back in the day before plats were required. This was basically a subdivision by survey. NAP purchased 190 acres from the Reynolds family. That's how Reynolds Road got its name. And these 10-acre parcels were all created. A few years later, the owners of those parcels formed an unincorporated nonprofit association called the Meadowbrook West Road Maintenance Association. That association basically manages and operates and repairs the private road that is Reynolds Road, zigzags its way up the mountain and serving those 19 parcels. There's another parcel's been added since then, sort of annexed into the association. And then there's been some additional parcels down here. I think there's 20 parcels at this point, or maybe 21. The applicant, I'm sorry, well, this aerial kind of shows you the area that is served by Reynolds Road, outlined in yellow. And Robert Haynes owns a parcel that abuts the Cougar Creek parcel. Bob Haynes is going to be speaking tonight as one of our expert witnesses. Dave Lepard is our other expert hydrogeologist that will be addressing the issues. And then the Cougar Creek parcel in question is outlined here in red. Those issues are primarily whether the applicant ranch at Cougar Creek has easement rights to use Reynolds Road for a proposed driveway to serve lots one and two of their proposed plat. The other primary issue is just water. Is there sufficient groundwater to serve the four proposed lots? And enough groundwater that will not negatively affect existing priority water right holders? We're going to spend most of our time talking about that. Kind of collateral issues, whether the applicant satisfied the requirements of your code for this plat, whether the subdivision's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and whether the subdivision, if it's approved, will impose an unreasonable burden on future owners. And we're definitely going to come back to that. This is interesting. Okay. So the plat that they've provided or filed for that 22 acres shows four lots here. There's sort of an existing, I'll call it a logging road, that winds its way through. This area is the top of a hill. They want to have a new driveway come off of Reynolds Road right into this area to serve lots one and two. And that's the road easement issue that the road association is contesting. The applicant claims they have easement rights. We claim they don't. Not surprising, you've got two lawyers who can't agree. I hope this goes back to full size.
There you go. The plus sign, would that do it?
Yeah, but it's jumping around on me here.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't want to go there. Maybe this wasn't such a great idea, David.
Well, I don't know that I could do any better.
So I'll tell you, on the issue of the easement, the access road, that's a legal question. I think your own county attorney has his own opinion on that, and has shared that as part of staff's evaluation of this. I'll simply tell you that we've put that question where it belongs. It's now in district court. Lawsuit was filed today by the road association against Ranch at Cougar Creek, asking the district court to basically determine what easement rights, if any, the applicant has to Reynolds Road. And if they have any easement rights, what are the limits or conditions on those easement rights? So that's not an issue that you need to decide or could decide. The court's going to make that determination. It is relevant, however, to keep in mind, if you decide to pass this project on to approve this minor subdivision, that court case will continue. The judge will make a determination eventually what easement rights the applicant has. And in the meantime, we're going to ask for an injunction so that driveway does not get built. And I think that part of their plan will be held up until the court makes a determination. You can approve the subdivision, but you cannot grant an easement unless they have one. So we'll let the court decide that question. The applicant has, I believe through their own actions, has acknowledged that the Meadowbrook West Road Association actually has the authority to manage and operate the private road, Reynolds Road. And I say that because there are recorded documents, and they're in the record, that created the association and gave the association that authority to essentially levy assessments, to file liens against property owners who don't pay for their fair share of maintenance, to let people in and let people out of the association. That's happened. And the applicants acknowledged the authority of the association by asking to join the association. Last month, they sent a letter asking if they could become dues-paying members of the association for lots one and two. And I think they did that out of recognition that the association has that authority. They wanted to join the association so lots one and two could be members, and then by extension have the right to use Reynolds Road. Their request was denied by the association, as is their right to decide who is and is not part of their group. So we're going to leave the rest of the road issue, the easement issue, to the court and move on to what I think is the critical issue for this particular project, and that is whether there's enough groundwater to serve the four lots that they're proposing.
Let's get there. Just try it. Do a thing larger with that.
Control plus.
Oh. At the top?
Control plus.
Oh. Oh, that worked.
There you go.
Let's try one other thing, Scott.
And then maybe.
That's for you. Bingo.
Yeah, go on, go on.
Just drag it down here. I can't see the drag bar, can you?
This is why I always bring a paper copy. So the question is, does sufficient groundwater exist to serve this project? And you're going to hear tonight, not opinions, but facts, that the answer is no. Not only is this area, I think, overdrawing from the limited groundwater resources that are available, there's some 30-plus existing vacant lots that if they all drill wells, the limited groundwater resource of this area is going to be completely overwhelmed. You'll hear from individuals, and Bob Haynes has collected information from a few dozen property owners that have had to drill new wells. They've had to deepen existing wells. They've had to hydrofrack existing wells, all in an effort to generate more water because their existing wells have declining production. This isn't opinion. These are things that have been happening for decades. And so the problem exists. The approval of this four-lot subdivision is not going to create the problem. It's going to exacerbate an existing problem. I think we have already crossed the tipping point where the demand for groundwater exceeds the supply in this area. And approval of this project will only make that worse. I'm going to give up, David. Can you scroll forward to page six for me? Or backwards, I guess.
I have a problem.
Is it dead?
Move the other way, though.
Oh, you went six, right?
Yeah, that's it. So Commissioners, and this is all on the record, I just wanted to highlight a few things. If you could scroll up just a little bit further, David. These are provisions of your code that apply for minor subdivision on the issue of water supply. The applicant is required to show that there's enough water to serve the project and that serving the project will not overburden or disadvantage existing priority well holders or water right holders. They have to produce a groundwater quality report that contains enough information to demonstrate that newer existing wells have enough water without negatively affecting nearby property owners. This is a subdivision that they proposed. There will be four new individual wells, one for each lot. And they have a professional geologist that provided a report, and that's in the record. We have a lot of disagreement about that report. If you could go to the next page, please. And you'll hear from Bob Haynes and Dave Lepard about that. So this section of the ordinance says that unless the subdivision's going to be on a public water system, which this one isn't, they have to search well logs covering a minimum of a half-mile radius around the project. And for residential uses, they have to demonstrate 1,500 gallons a day with a minimum flow of five gallons a minute for four hours, and considering only a half acre will be irrigated. They have to demonstrate that for four lots. They have not, and they cannot. In fact, what they've demonstrated is the exact opposite, and Mr. Haynes will get to that. If conformance with that standard is questionable, they have to secure a secondary source of water, and they don't have that either. So what you'll hear tonight is how the hydrogeological report that was presented by the applicant falls short of what your ordinance requires. We have actually done that level of review and evaluation, and the findings are, well, significant. What Mr. Haynes and what Mr. Lepard will tell you paints a very grim picture of the groundwater resource in this area. Again, I think this area has already crossed the tipping point where the demand from existing residences exceeds the supply. People are seeing their water levels in their wells decline year after year. Mr. Haynes, who is the immediately adjacent property owner, has monitored his own well for years.
Okay, so we're down to one minute.
Oh, okay. I'm just about done. Well, I'll let my experts speak for themselves, but I just wanted to kind of set the table of what kind of existing condition is there in the Meadowbrook area, and what approval of this particular project will do is simply make that condition worse and accelerate the problems that a lot of the neighbors have already experienced. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I'm going to do for the two expert witnesses is I'll go five minutes instead of three, and I'll afford the same opportunity for the other side as well. And so is Mr. Haynes here?
So he actually can do.
Oh, okay. All right. So you're going to be speaking for a group, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, when your name is called, would you please stand? And everyone must be present in order for us to allot the 15 minutes to Mr. Haynes. So Margaret Albertson? Thank you. Jim Brown? Thank you. Jennifer Shanley? Thank you. Annette Knapp? Thank you. Susan Breedlove? Thank you. Nancy Haynes? Thanks. Val Kuntz? Thank you. David Nelson? Thank you. Steve and Susan Music? Okay, that's two. All right, and, okay, so I've got both of you there. And I guess it's Jody Walton? Thank you. Okay, you're all set to go. You've got 15 minutes. We'll give you a one-minute warning when your time is up. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Scott, do we have that map that we looked at earlier?
Screen's frozen. I can't move.
I want to kind of set the table for who I am. My name is Bob Haynes. I live at 21, 2571 South Reynolds Road in Coeur d'Alene with my wife Nancy. For 35 years, I was regional manager of the Idaho Department of Water Resources officer in Coeur d'Alene. We were responsible for water rights and well drilling. I am, or I was, the co-author of the Lindsay Creek Groundwater Management Area Study Program. I was a co-author of the Rathtrim Prairie Groundwater Management Area Program. I was co-lead on the IDWR management team for the USGS, Washington Department of Ecology, IDWR, Characterization of the Groundwater Resources of the Rathtrim Prairie. Scott mentioned the analysis that was done by the hydrogeologist. It did not, in my opinion, meet the requirements of the statute, in other words of the ordinance. In other words, you look at the report, and there's no indication there that well logs had been researched that were in a half-mile of the project boundary. At the hearing, before the hearing examiner, Mr. St. Goddard assured us that he had done so. And that raises some questions in my mind. His comment, I believe, was that he had looked at the ones that were pertinent. Well, there is a well that's 100 feet from the project boundary that produces a half-a-gallon a minute that's not included in his study. There's property that's owned by the Hackolas. It is a piece of property that's had numerous wells drilled on it and attempted to acquire an adequate water supply. That well is 130 feet from the project boundary. People who live west of the Shanleys, who are the ones that have the well that's right next to the property, their well is about 450 feet away from the project boundary. None of these were included. Some that were included were one that was drilled for Connie Newell. It's about a quarter of a mile away from the project. And I guess the question in my mind is, how do you justify saying that a well that's 100 feet away from the thing that you're looking at should not be included, but one that's a quarter of a mile away should? Now, if you look at the report, it would appear that everything is really hunky-dory. But when you do a little bit deeper dive into the situation as it exists there, you find out it's not. There are 30 properties, approximately 30 properties, within a half-mile of this project that have experienced problems of one kind or another. They've either had to deepen a well, they have had to put in a new well, they had to put in storage, they had to haul water. Now, I want to talk a little bit more about this well that's next door to the project The well that was drilled on the property, and something that needs to be said about this is that the information about what this well did, what it produced, was available at the hearing we had before the hearing examiner. The project proponents chose not to talk about it. And the reason that they chose not to talk about it, as far as I'm concerned, is because the well is 1,155 feet deep, and it produces three gallons a minute. In my view, because of the proximity of it to Shanley's well, there's a pretty good chance that they're going to be affected. So let's say that they wind up losing their water. I went to a reputable well drilling firm and got cost estimates on drilling a well and putting a pump system in, $70,000. To me, that's a significant impact. The map that you see before you hear is one that has three different colors within the blue line, if you will. There's a red, and those, the parcels that are in red are ones that I've been able to identify places where there are problems. The ones that are in yellow or green, depending on whether or not you're colorblind, are ones that have not any reported problems. I want to emphasize one thing here. That doesn't mean that there isn't a problem. It just means that the property owner doesn't know about it. Let me give an example of how that plays out. North of me, one of the properties that's in red there was owned by a lady who called me about 10 or 12 years ago and said, "I'm of that water." me about 10 or 12 years ago and said, "I'm about water." So, I did what I could. I came up, dropped a monitor, my well level monitor down it, and found out that, yeah, it was gone. That well, when it was drilled, produced, I believe, 50 gallons a minute. They deepened the well, and to this point, it doesn't appear that they're having problems, but the present owner of the property has put a monitoring piece of equipment on it so that he can determine whether there are issues. The parcels that are in pink or purple are ones that are undeveloped, and Scott mentioned that there's 30 of them within this half-mile circle that don't have any buildings on it. One of them that you'll notice is a huge piece down there is one that is owned by the Ranch of Cougar Creek. Scott made the comment that we very well have gone over the tipping point on whether or not we're going to have significant problems here. Now, we can chase water by, you drill a well, and it goes dry, and you deepen it, and then it goes dry, and you deepen it again. The issue here is not, and for me is not, and has never have, has been, is there water underneath that property? There clearly is. There's no question about it. The issue is, can it be developed without having undue impact on neighboring properties? I don't think it can. One other thing, and this is not, I think, in the stuff that you've been, it's in the record, but I don't think it's in the things that have been handed to you, so I'm going to give this to Dave to hand out. Can he want to? Because I think he wants the mic. Thank you.
This is a record of the monitoring that I've done on my well since June 20th of 2009. So, I've got roughly 12 years of record there. Here's one year that was missing because the equipment storing the numbers failed on me. There's two things that are, in my mind, pertinent here. One is that when you look at the numbers from 2015 through 2021, the low water levels I see in the fall has continually gone down. The second thing that I want to point out, and this is really important when you're talking about the volume of water that's available, is that if you look at the date that the highest water level was seen in the spring, it has continually moved earlier in the year. This is an important fact because when we go into a situation where we're actually past what I would call a recharge event, there's a certain volume of water that's available to be pumped by people in the area. Generally speaking, the amount of water that's pumped per day per house is going to be pretty much the same. So, if you start in March pumping that quantitative water, and you end in August, you've evacuated a significant amount of more water than if you started in July. And in 2009, the highest level that I saw was on June 20th of that year. Last year, it happened in April, full two months earlier. In the hearing, before the hearing examiner, the applicant's consultant referred to a highway of water underneath this property, and that is pure, unadulterated garbage. There is no highway of water under there. There is a vessel of water that's like a bathtub or a glass. It's not being replenished in the summer months, and it represents what we have to deal with. And as Scott said earlier, there are many indications that we have reached the tipping point, and we've gone past it. There are a couple of other projects I want to bring to your attention. They're in Cootenay County. One of them is the Hoyt Bluff Water System. Are any of you aware of that particular? Okay, well, let me give you some details on it. It was designed as a public water supply. The county approved the subdivision. The Department of Environmental Quality approved the wells that were designed to serve the project. I think there was a couple of them that produced about 45 gallons a minute. And within a couple of years after they started pumping these wells, they went dry. So, in an effort to find water within the boundaries of the subdivision, they drilled either nine or 10 more wells. None of them were successful. They saved their bacon because they were able to acquire a piece of property down near Highway 53. Hoyt Bluff, by the way, is over in the Hauser area. They saved their bacon by being able to buy a piece of property that was near Highway 53 and actually over the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer. And to my knowledge, they're in fine shape right now. The other one that I want to talk about, which is somewhat similar to this, is, I believe that the name of the development is Blackstone. It's a subdivision of about 12 lots homes. Again, it was a subdivision that was approved by the county. It's a public water supply, so the plans and specifications and the test pumping and all that that was done for that project was approved by the Department of Environmental Quality. It failed. These folks are hauling water during the summer. I believe Scott told me that there is one piece of property, at least one piece of property, that's for sale in that development, and they can't sell it because of the water situation. And we who live in the area are faced with that kind of situation. Depressed property values are going to be an outgrowth of lacking water. The third one I want to talk about is one that I, it's an area that I mentioned earlier. It's Lindsay Creek Groundwater Management Area in the Lewiston area. Really high quantities of water, but the recharge was very limited. And what happened was, the people who had the earliest rights in that area weren't able to get the water that they were entitled to. That problem was solved by requiring people who live in that area to drill through that upper basalt area, seal off that aquifer, and go to a deeper aquifer, down about 800 feet. It was expensive, but it was the only way to protect people who were prior users of The one other thing that I want to say at this point, commissioners, is that this area is undoubtedly the most studied groundwater area in Cootenay County. I have probably spent a couple hundred hours of my own time looking at this situation, trying to identify problems and potential solutions.
Okay, you're down to one minute. Go ahead, sir.
I would submit to you that if, with the evidence we have of the problems that exist there, you find that what's been submitted meets your requirements, then do us all a favor and eliminate the water requirement portion of the ordinance. Because if this doesn't meet those standards, you're not going to find one ever that will. I said in my initial comments to the commissioners or to the community development, I'm not opposed to development of this property. It's private property. Those folks ought to be able to do what they want to, but they should not be able to do it at the expense of the property rights of those of us who've been there before. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. David, I don't know, there's another gentleman who I guess is considered an expert witness?
Yes, sir.
Who is that?
Dave Lepard.
Mr. Lepard here?
Yes.
Okay. Well, he doesn't have the 10 requisite. No, he's got eight.
Do you need this anymore?
Good point. Okay, so, Mr. Lepard has eight names. We need 10 to give him 15 minutes. I'll mention, when I read off the eight, is there anyone here? I need two more people to donate their time. Oh, okay. Let's do this. Sir, would you stand up, please? And your name?
Paul.
Paul? Someone else, please?
Victoria.
Victoria? Okay. I'm going to read the names of the other eight people. When I read your name, please stand. Okay. Mr. or Ms. Build? Thank you, sir. Thomas Kuntz? Rogers Studdel? Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Rebecca Studdel? Thank you, ma'am. Linda Becker? Thank you. Paul Becker? Thank you. Christian Leahy? And Tom Whitehead? Okay, you've got 15 minutes, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Name and address?
I'm David Lepard. I live in Harrison, Idaho, or near Harrison. Been a geologist for...
And we need your address, though.
Oh, P.O. Box 21.
Fair enough. Go right ahead, sir.
Been a geologist for 35 years. I don't disagree with the geology that the other gentleman proposed or put forth, but I'm with Bob. There is not enough water up there to service even the existing lots if they all drilled I'm with Bob. I worked on the Lindsay Creek project. It is a basalt aquifer, but it's a fractured aquifer, just like this one, and there's no way you can get enough recharge into that aquifer to do anybody any good, especially there's no river or lake of available water, groundwater, in the area. It just, it isn't. I'm better at answering questions than I am at public speaking, as you can tell, but...
Are you asking for questions? Is that it? This is your time.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I'm more than willing to share my time with answering the questions that the commissioners have than I am trying to explain it in, not layman's terms, but...
More technical terms?
Yeah. A fractured aquifer is just that. It's a crack. It may be several cracks, but you have no way of getting water down to the puddles that our other hydrogeologists inferred, inferred or put out there. There's no way to get it down there. And like Bob's data showed, is, he's pulling up, they're pumping water sooner, and he's pumping water sooner than everybody else out there, and there's too many additional wells that have gone dry that I'm aware of, just from other people that I know in the area.
So, you asked about questions. When you talk about pumping water down, are you describing what we've come to know as fracking?
No.
You're not?
No. I'm talking about drawdown on the existing aquifer.
Okay.
Yeah, no. Hydro-fracking is something I disagree with, being a geologist and knowing what the...
Go right ahead.
Knowing what the pressures are needed to actually break rock, none of them come anywhere close. Right now, they're just cleaning out fractures. And so, yeah, there's, there are no viable alternatives to make this work. The well that we saw, the subdivision owner's drill, what did you say, 1,155 feet and three gallons a minute? That's not anywhere close to anybody having, being able to build a house up there, let alone four of them. They're going to have to do something, something other than, for a water supply. Couple of things came to mind when we were talking about this, and that was, a public water supply? You've got nowhere to put a well to do that, at least in the area up there. Bob talked about the, one he knew of, that, well, the one down here, that they had to go across the river into the, or into the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer to get enough water. And I don't, you don't have that option up here, or it doesn't appear like you do.
Are there any questions from Mr. Lepard? Leslie, do you have any? Bill? Keep going.
I'll try to think of some other things to bring up, but Bob's covered most of them, and he's the one that has the data that I've reviewed. And he's right. There just isn't enough water up there, especially without impacting the existing property owners. You just can't do it.
Okay, so you're saying, basically, the groundwater is insufficient?
Well, that's correct. Yeah, that's pretty obvious from the holes that are, the well logs I've seen and the holes I see, have seen. A friend of mine lives up the other side of Reynolds Creek, thousand, over 1,000-foot hole, three gallons a minute.
Okay, so when I read the hydrogeologist's report in the file, I did see the reference to some of the wells as low as half a gallon, half a gallon per minute. What does a homeowner do in a case like that? Is that a cistern? Does that require a cistern? With water being trucked in?
Well, yeah, it's going to either do that. You can build storage on the project, but at a half gallon a minute, it's going to take way too long to fill the storage tank.
Bill, do you have any questions?
No.
Do you have anything further to add?
It's just a bad idea, and I certainly disagree with the other hydrogeologists referring to there being a river of water underneath the property. Not there.
Well, let me ask you this, for those of us, obviously, who don't have your technical expertise. How does one identify a river of water, say, 300 feet? Now, what's the mechanism for doing that?
You're going to have to put numerous holes in the ground and look at the communication between the holes to see if the fractured permeability will even come close to providing that amount of water.
Okay, so I think I hear you saying is that that cannot be determined by a single hole that's drilled.
Oh, not a chance. If you do a pump test on it, you're going to get an answer, but it's not going to be one that's viable. It's going to take more than that to find out if, if there's a river of water down it.
So, when the multiple holes are drilled, are they drilled, does each have to be drilled to the same depth?
Yeah, well, yes. You have to hit, you have to hit the permeable zone, or you, it doesn't do you any... You have to hit, you have to hit the permeable, permeable zone, or you, doesn't do you any good.
Right, fair enough. I don't have any further questions. Leslie, Bill? Thank you, Mr. Lepard.
Okay.
Appreciate your time, sir.
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, so as David, Director David Callahan indicated earlier, we will continue now with the three-minute testimonies, and it'll be the, those folks who are in favor of the appeal. Okay? So that would be, right? Is Mr. Donald Mosher here?
Yes.
You have three minutes, sir. Go right ahead.
My name's Donald Mosher. I live at sixteen nineteen South Reynolds Road. I'm within the half-mile radius of this property.
Yes, sir.
My existing well is six hundred feet deep. I purchased some electronic monitoring stuff, devices like Bob Haynes has, very reputable. I've been monitoring my well for about two years, and the static level has dropped over thirteen feet in the past two years. That is more than the level fell in the previous thirty years. It's twenty-five foot lower now than when drilled. I've witnessed this drop in level as the development grew in the gulch, particularly the new homes in Meadowbrook and Clementson. I've also spoken to Heidi Bittencourt, who lives directly east of Meadowbrook. After I saw a drilling rig on her property, their well went dry. They had to drill a new well. This is all, this drop in level is all despite me hauling water this past year, every single drop that I used for irrigation. All I can do is, is, I implore you people to take a pause and look at this data, the empirical data, the expert testimony, and the increasing problems in the area, because it's not gonna be a problem going forward. It's already a problem. It's on us. They talked about this tipping point. We're seeing our levels drop. Our wells go dry, and we cannot support four wells on a twenty-two acre parcel, let alone the potential of wells on that hundred and sixty acres across the road that's zoned for two acre parcels. The, the gulf, the area won't handle it. So, please, look at the data. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. James Schweitzer? Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, James Schweitzer, live at eighteen fifty-four South Reynolds Road. I've owned property up there for twenty-one years. I'm on the board. We currently have a twenty acre piece. My piece of property adjoins boundaries with Mr. Haynes. If the other ten acre section, which is divided, would ever be developed, it would be in close proximity to the well that is at the depth of Lake Ponderay, which is eleven hundred and fifty-five feet. In the last ten years, I'll just speak in the last ten years, my well is six hundred feet deep. I ran it for a couple of years in the last ten years. Let's just go back. The pump went out due to running out of water. Replaced the pump. Then I ran out of water again, put in a holding tank, three thousand gallon holding tank, ran out of water again, had it hydro-fracked. When it was drilled, it was six hundred feet. It was three gallons and three and three quarter gallons a minute, and the static water level is about a hundred feet. It's down to about a hundred and forty-two right now, and I don't see it getting any better. So when I hear people talking about there's a lot of water, I'm not sure where it is. I know that if you took that ten-year window, I've spent over thirty thousand dollars just on that one well. It's my wife and I on twenty acres. We have less than a half acre of landscaping. There's not an enormous amount of water that's being used. It's just not available. And so, we can talk about depths, we can talk about trying to find it, we can talk about all kinds of things, but over the last, and this is prior to the explosion of growth in this area, we, we were experiencing this, you know, in two thousand and twelve. Well, it's two thousand and fourteen. So you fast forward, if we keep at this current pace, it's not that the damage is gonna happen, it's happening. What happens to people who have property? They sell it, new homeowners get in there, they develop it. The problem is, is I'm gonna be one of the first ones to do adjudicated water rights, guaranteed. So I'm gonna do a priority or a delivery call on whoever this new homeowner is, because I don't wanna be out of water. So I just think it's where, I understand people have the right to develop their property, and I think that's fine, but the code that I've read from you guys as a business owner, my business is in Spokane, I do commercial construction, I understand that very well. I do not understand the water. When we have codes, we have to adhere to them. That code couldn't be clearer to me. The standard has not been met. So I have to wait till the harm happens to me before I have recourse. I'm obviously in favor of this appeal. I'm one of the driving forces of, of standing here tonight. This won't go away.
I'm sorry, sir, your time's up. Complete your thought, go right ahead.
My thought to you guys is I am imploring you to take a serious look at this, because you're gonna end up with future homeowners that are gonna be in tears, because they're gonna have houses built that they don't have water for. You're gonna have, you're gonna have existing residents that are gonna be screaming mad because there's no, there's no way to fix this, but to relook at what you're doing, either adhere to your own code or do away with it.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Doug Albertson? Address, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Doug Albertson, seven eight six two West Clementson Road. I'm a half mile from the proposed Ranch at Cougar Creek. We've lived in the area for forty years, gone through the, the regular well problems, which seem to be omnipresent among us, hydro-fracking, put in a cistern. From the time the well was drilled, we've lost ninety-five feet of static level. We're existing with the water we have, but we're, we're very, very frugal, we have to be. The neighbors contiguous to our property have had wells run dry. They've drilled new wells, and some of them are relatively successful. When, when people drill wells here, they drill a well until they get sufficient water to make a bank loan, or if they've got lots and lots of money, just to survive there, they stop drilling at that point. At twenty-five, thirty bucks a foot, doesn't make sense to go eleven hundred and fifty-five feet. So I was at the last hearing, and I listened to their Ranch at Cougar Creek's hydrogeologist tell us about Highway ninety-five kinds of water running through this area, and there's magical ways to find it. I learned later that nine days before our hearing, they knew that they had drilled an eleven hundred and fifty-five foot well and had gotten a big three gallons a minute. So the, the magic of, of their hydrogeologist, you know, eludes me. They knew this information at the last hearing, yet they're telling me all about this water that's available. The water's not here, unfortunately. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
It's a pleasure being able to talk to you. Thank you for that opportunity.
Oh, you're very welcome, sir. Okay, Ms. Lynette Brown? Come right up, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lynette Brown. I live at six zero three eight West Heidi Road, and I have just recently become aware of, in fact, a couple of days ago, that I am one parcel away, so I think, not a direct neighbor, but one away, so within the half-mile radius. And we are fairly new to the area, I think five years, and we have a, just the two of us, so we don't use a lot of water ourselves. We're conserving that. However, we're on our third well, and it is failing. We are working on finding a location to drill our fourth well, and so we're, that's a work in progress. It's been difficult during the COVID times to get people up and, and doing that. I guess I just want to, I don't know all the facts and details. We are newer, so I, I'm sorry, I don't know all those specific numbers and whatnot. I do believe, though, however, the applicant for this property had, came to our residence, because I think we're so close, we might even share a small border, I'm not sure. Somebody came to our, our house because they couldn't access this property any other way. There was no other way to get to it. So they asked, I was there, said, can we come through your property to go do something up there? We can't get to it another way. And I was being neighborly, and I said, sure, go ahead. And I'm just letting the applicant know that if that should happen again, I won't be allowing them to come through and do what they're gonna be doing, if we're the easy way up to the property. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Evening, Commissioners. I represent my family. We live, we currently have property at nineteen three five South Reynolds Road. It's undeveloped, and what I'm hearing is no water, no water, no water. So the prospects of drilling a well and either having it, you know, dry, and I'm just gonna have a big hole in the ground with, which to just throw more money in it, is really disheartening. And I'm hoping that you guys can reject this and push it back down and reevaluate it. I'm not against development of property, but at the expense of the community, I, I am against that. So, and I just wanna review everything else that people have said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jason Shanley. I live at twelve thirty-one South Academy Court, and I unfortunately am the property adjacent to the current well. Everyone in this room could hit my well from the new well with a stone's throw. I currently get less than a half a gallon a minute, and fifty years ago, when I was born in Court Lane, we knew the Clementsons, and it's always been kind of my dream to move to the gulch. And ten years ago, almost ten years ago, my wife and I bought the property. We knew that the well did not produce significant amounts, so we are very conscientious about taking showers, shutting the water off while you're lathering up, those kind of weird things. This summer, we knew the property was for sale. This summer, we started hearing the well driller out there, because it's about a hundred feet from my property. My dog ran out. I don't know who the person was, made small talk. The person immediately said, are you part of the lawsuit? I didn't really know about a lawsuit, but I said, well, I'm not in favor of somebody drilling a well right next to mine when I get half a gallon a minute. The person basically said, well, there's nothing you could do to stop it. It's gonna happen. I grabbed my dog, and we walked away. I didn't ask him a name, I just walked away. To me, that's pretty arrogant. It's gonna happen, no matter what. The price that they're asking for this property, I am a school teacher, I wish I could afford one point six million, or whatever it is. They're gonna put four lots. They're not putting tiny homes in if somebody's gonna pay that kind of money for a lot. They're not gonna put a little tiny house. It's gonna probably be a big old house. They're not gonna get by with a half a gallon a minute. I don't know. I don't know how I can afford to re-drill another well. That may not happen. I don't know. I hope you will deny this request.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, neighbors. I'm just gonna reiterate what our last speaker said, and I'm not next to this current project, but I'm one property away from the hundred and sixty acres, and I'm sure, should you allow this development to move forward, will be the next one that you'll be looking at. And I'm sure we'll all be sitting here doing this all over again. I can't, you, you can see what I do for a living, and I'm sure you guys are well aware of what law enforcement makes in the region. I can't afford a seventy thousand dollar redo with no guarantee of success. I can't. I wanna keep my home. It's my dream home, my dream plan. I moved here to live in rural Idaho. I wanna keep it rural Idaho. I don't want it to change. I don't wanna have that many new neighbors taking up the water. That's what it really comes down to. I could go on and on and on about other issues that I think are relevant, but I'm just gonna leave it at that, and I, I think all my neighbors would agree. Please don't take away the water. Please don't make me have to sell my home, 'cause I can't afford a well. And quite frankly, I think it's been said, if, if, if I have to drill another well, and I can't afford it, and I have to sell my home, who's gonna buy it? So I'm asking you to not send me to financial ruin, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And so we have Ms. Kathy, is it Nierinki?
Nierinks.
Nierinks. So to KX at the end? Okay.
Yeah, to KX. I'm Kathleen Nierinks. I live at forty-six ninety-one South Stack Road. If you had that map with the circle on it, there's a part of the LLC that owns the Ranch at Cougar, Ranch at Cougar Creek that they didn't show on it, because it's out of the half-mile. It's thirty acres, then there's Stack Road, and right below that is part of that thirty acres that we purchased years ago from the previous owners. Did I give the address? Forty-six ninety-one South Stack Road?
Thank you.
And my husband, John, and we came here to Court Lane in nineteen eighty. In nineteen eighty-one, we purchased that property that, that's down there off Stack Road, and a few years later, we purchased the seven acres south of Stack Road that was part of that previous, part of the land. I don't speak well, so get to the point, lady. My experience was we purchased five acres with a well on it and assumed the VA loan that was, had been drilled and failed, that the, the well that was originally for the loan had to be re-drilled, because it did not supply enough water for the VA loan. So because we were assuming the loan, we wanted to verify that the new well actually did produce the five gallons a minute. So we did it the, the hard way. We took five gallon ca, water, you know, buckets and lined them all up, had a stopwatch, and we started, we started the well, the well itself, not the holding tank or anything, the well itself, and we filled it up in one minute, two minutes, and we did that. God, I don't even remember. Kept emptying buckets and putting it back. I just remember doing this. And it was the hard way of proving that we had adequate water, that we could assume the VA loan, and we did. But we were very aware that there's a well over there that had already not been sufficient, and it's probably a hundred feet away. So when they say fractured, they mean you can get water here, but you might not get it a hundred feet away, et cetera, et cetera. So this is, you have to understand what, the difference between aquifer and fractured aquifer means. And it's simply that this... And it's simply that this 1,100-gallon, or I mean, feet well, okay, get to the point.
The 1155.
Could be down deep enough that it affects our 275-foot well. So even though it goes down here, it could be in the same fracture, or it could not be. We don't know. The point is, we also put in a holding tank so that we would have enough water. And here's my funny little story that I'm going to try to tell. Somewhere in between here, seven other wells were drilled around us, and one of the wells that was drilled directly affected-
Just complete your thought. Go right ahead.
Directly affected our well because one day it went dry. And I'm noticing that my neighbor had been watering her lawn all day because she turned it on, big lawn, water. She goes off to work. It runs all day, and suddenly I don't have water. I can't even flush my toilet. The next day, I had to go up to her and say, look, you can't do that. My well has been here 20 years, longer than yours, and I'm going to have to go to court or something and turn you off because I have water rights that precede yours. We bought in 1980, but the previous, I mean, the well was drilled even 10 years before that.
Ma'am, I have to stop you now.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Okay, Mr. Travis Ervin, please.
Good evening. My name is Travis Ervin. I live at 1303 South Reynolds Road. And I'm one of the red boxes off of Bob's really nice graph and chart. Just a couple of things. I've lived here now for nine years, and the well was put in in 1988, my well. And over the last few years, the recovery rate of the well has been going down and down. So it started enough that two years ago, I have to haul water from town for my wife's garden. You don't want to deny her her garden. So, you know, I haul about 300 gallons a day in the summertime or the growing season. And that's a lot of cost and driving and, you know, wear on the road and my vehicles and everything else hauling that kind of water. But that was one point of data. Also, I had a spring in the back of my property that used to be the water source through a spring box to the homestead back in the late 1800s. That year-round spring is now dry, you know, so it's gone. You know, and here's something that was used for over 100 years, you know, back in the day, and now it's gone. So it's just another indication that, you know, water is drying up or not flowing the way it used to be. And I'm probably going to be hated for saying this, but I worked for an oil company for 40 years. And many of it was in drilling and well completions, drilling oil wells, new wells, infield wells, and that type of thing. And you could always use magic tools, seismic processing, you know, infrared from satellites and all that to determine where an oil body is. But you could never verify it until you actually drilled a hole in the ground and tested it. So all of the, you know, wonderful tools and all, magnetic resonance and all these stuff things, doesn't do any good until you drill a hole. And it could be dry. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jeff Knapp?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Knapp. I live at 1570 South Reynolds Road with my wife Lynette, who's here in the audience, and my son, who's a teenager and chose not to join for this particular meeting. Probably all thankful for that. The, I appreciate the time to speak. The one thing I want to kind of emphasize, first of all, I live next to a couple of the, what we'll call red block zones or properties that were on that map. And one of the things that I worry about is the equity that I have in the home. I've been working for, like many of the people in this room, for 30, 35-plus years. And I've spent my whole life working to kind of have the things that I have right now. And a big portion of our, I guess, our savings, if you will, is the equity that we have in our home. And it's important to us that we're able to draw down on that at times to provide what will hopefully be our retirement in the not-too-distant future. The thought that we would end up potentially having problems with water, accessibility to water, to the point where you've got to haul water up to the house, has a significant impact on the value of the house. I, for one, would never buy a house that I knew I had to haul water to. It's no more than I would buy a house where I had to drive down the road to use the restroom. It's as important as that. The other piece of this, I guess, really is, aside from the retirement, the equity piece, is, you know, we live, we live in an area that is clearly having water declining issues. We live also in a very dry summer. We probably came off just one of the driest summers we've had in a long time. While I like to be able to water my lawn, and I don't have much in the way of, you know, landscaping to water. But I have to tell you, it's hard for me to stand outside with a hose and water a little bit of the lawn when my neighbors are driving by with truckloads of water. Kind of feel a little guilty about that. These guys are big, burly guys. I'm not like that, and I worry a little bit about sending the wrong message that I don't care. And I'd certainly, I'd certainly encourage the Commissioners to look at this closely. And at the very least, let's apply the ordinances at our place and hold the perspective, folks that want to build this, build this community, even if it's the four lots that we're talking about. Let's apply what those ordinances say and get a really good understanding of the, of what the actual water situation is. I, the thought, again, of running out of water, or at the very least, asking my wife to buy a pickup truck and put a big, you know, retainer on the back and haul water up the rather windy, steep road that we live on in Reynolds Road. Which, by the way, I didn't say this in the beginning, we are with, certainly within a half-mile of the project that we're talking about. So we have significant concerns as well, and I'd ask that you look at this very, very closely, and appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, so that concludes those folks who are in favor of the appeal. And so what I'm going to do at this point is turn it over to the individual who's going to make the county's case, and that would be our director, Dave Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone.
30 seconds.
I am sharing on Zoom the 361 pages you have in the electronic file. That includes the hearing examiner's analysis, along with all of the evidence that's been adduced up until tonight. I will be brief, maybe not quite as fast as you would like, but I can narrow things down.
But you do get 15 minutes, by the way.
And I won't need that. I think the essence of what I want to get across is is very well put by the hearing examiner in the first 11 pages of your 361 pages. He has taken each issue, digested it, rolled it back out for you as to why he believes it's been properly addressed in this case. And so he finds that the staff did the right thing in approving this subdivision, and I do too. That's why I signed the actual order of decision. The one moving part of this that I believe really has to be decided by you because the staff could not have known everything that's been adduced tonight and that you're about to hear from the other side, is water. I think we can all agree that the other issues are reasonably put aside, especially the one that's going to court. Only the court can decide. And so you're down to the singular issue of water. And we must rely on what the evidence is at the time that we analyze these things. And we and the hearing examiner decided, based on the new information we got at the de novo hearing for the hearing examiner, that water had been properly addressed. It truly is up to you tonight, or in your future deliberation, as to whether your mind is persuaded that there's insufficient water based on what you've just heard, or there is sufficient water based on what you are about to hear. So that's really all that I have for you, unless you have questions for me. Because I think what you really need to hear now is from the other side, as to why they believe there is sufficient water.
Questions for David? Okay.
I'll pull up the PowerPoint from the attorney on the other side.
Okay, so this is Attorney Megan O'Dowd?
Since mine is going to be very short now, can I give my, I will probably spend five minutes, give the remainder to our expert?
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, that's all you need to do.
And then he can have the five minutes. He's all.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. O'Dowd has requested, and I, you know, and I would concur in this request that she contends to yield a portion of her time so her expert can testify longer.
Absolutely.
I'm not the water expert.
That's okay.
I just don't think you want to hear me.
Absolutely.
I don't know why it's still on.
Because you're not sharing it.
Yeah, I am. Oh, it's paused. Let me start over again. There you are. Sorry.
There we go.
That, and F5. Well, that didn't work.
What were you trying to?
Just go to the screen, the slideshow.
Go to, it's down.
Is it up here too? Slideshow. Present from first off.
I don't care if it looks like that. As long as I can scroll through it, because I'm going to skip most of it now.
Click on each one of these to get what you want.
Okay.
Okay.
That's just fine.
Sure.
B B 1,002.
Perfect. Thank you. Megan O'Dowd, for the record. I represent the applicant ranch at Cougar Creek. And my picking up, 703 East Lakeside Avenue.
You're almost there. Okay, there you go.
This one further. And I had previously given, Mr. Callahan has some printed copies, and we have electronic copies of materials. I have a written copy. The lawsuit is news to me. Most of my presentation was addressing rental land. I understand that that's not needed. So it sounds like they consider that, at least for our purposes, it's not a concern. Before we start this clock, because I really will be quick, but can I tell you, David, which slide do you go to?
Yes, sure.
If I have these printed. So the first slide that I'd like to go to. I think it's page eight. Can we go to page eight quickly? Yep, that, yep, that one. So I will be, I will try to just use maybe five minutes, and I'll defer all of my remaining time to our hearing. To just clearly where the man is of, for the record, I understand that there has, there's been a lawsuit filed. It sounds like Mr. Pauline O'Neil is waiving those arguments that we said that pertains to the commission. So for what it's worth, in your packets, there are copies of the two basements from our perspective. Now, two of the grants, there's a grant, and we have highlighted one language. David, you could jump forward. It's probably wide, 15 or so. I've highlighted the language in the basement grants. There's both a public basement grant and a separate grant, you know, also, this is a grant about this, the maintenance issue. We were not required to join the rental loan, or this, you know, this is a document required. We did, frankly, as a legal agency, we offered to do that. In those comments about, we offered $10 a yard, and we had to do this for a month to go, and we were resolutely denied. So that is part of the reason why I also think there's no undue burden. The only other thing that I would like to address, and there's records of survey that show definitively the two locations on this property that do join the wrong way as well. So, David, could you jump ahead? There's one slide on the table. Probably the last, it's here to last, probably.
Does it look like me?
One right before that. There's been a lot of discussion about the code, what the code requires. My interpretation of the code is quite different than what these houses have suggested. What we are required to do, particularly at this stage of the development, is to obtain a report by someone with the right qualifications, a professional geologist, that shows that there is a right requirement. We are not required at this point to have, I just, whether that, certainly. If there is no water there, there will be no houses. That will be admitted as a condition of the program. So from our perspective, the code absolutely has been, because we are not required to drill the wells at this point. We just have to show where we have. So frankly, I certainly appreciate the testimony that you gave. My interpretation of this code is that, unfortunately, as written, which is what our client is entitled to, is irrelevant. The only thing that could be relevant, which is the standard on the panel, is if we didn't have a, but the findings are there, and the report is that. That's really all I wanted to say in terms of what the code requires. I wanted to refer the rest of my time to professional geologists, and his reports are in your record and in the printout, so in addition to all the documents, all the reports and the well logs. And I would, I would ask that the Commissioners read my supplemental materials when you have to.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we had a chat box pop up. A member of the Zoom audience said that they couldn't actually hear Ms. O'Dowd. So I'm concerned that our microphone system's not working and picking up for Zoom. Jonathan's going to take a look.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
This light really doesn't work, so use this. If that goes up, it interferes with the audio, so.
So use this one. Don't talk.
So talk.
Yes.
As long as, as long as the green light is on.
That's for them.
That was horrible.
You can give it all over them. I don't think.
It's okay. Don't rush. Don't rush. It's all right.
It's the time.
It's okay. It's okay.
I thought I would have about 15.
No, wait. No, no, no. Did you pause it, Betsy?
I did.
You're fine.
Okay, perfect. You don't need to.
Okay.
That will be B 1,003.
And your name and address, please, sir?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Gene Stankottard. I'm a principal hydrogeologist and owner of the Water Notch Resource Group at P O Box 28755 Spokane, Washington. I am a licensed geologist in five western states, a licensed hydrogeologist in Washington, California, and a certified water right examiner in Idaho and Washington.
Okay.
So I deal with water, water supply, water rights issues for over 30 years. I've handed, Dave, could you pull up the? So I've got a slide presentation, and actually, it's going to probably answer, or luckily, it's probably going to answer some of these questions that were actually posed here tonight. So just briefly, I think we had the lovely lady over here, actually defined bedrock aquifer very well. We do have bedrock aquifers there. It's fracture flow systems. It's not a bucket of water down there. It is fractures that are regionally aligned, and I'll show you some maps here in a second, that host water. And there tend to be linear, linear features. Oh, here we go. Could we go to maybe the third? Let's go, go to the sixth slide. All these, the one that's kind of, right there. Let's go start with that one right there. So the bedrock system out there is a pre-cambran, nice, very silicious material in a very complex area. The star represents the area of the proposed minaplat. There's quite a bit of faulting going on up in the north. Just southeast of the site, there's a whole bunch of tertiary bioseam basalt action going on from, from all the stuff that happened in Washington State and southern Idaho. And then we have this big pluton, even a little further south, that has come up, raised everything up, folded it, cracked it. It was, just basically, it's a very complex geologic setting there. But through the geological activities, it has caused some significant fracturing going on. We go to the next slide. Actually, could we go up to, yeah, that one right there. So here is, these are textbook examples of bedrock fracture systems. There are all these linear-type fractures that occur in bedrock. Various types of bedrock, and we have a schist here, a very silicious schist, pre-cambran metamorphose, Pritchett formation, actually. And you can see there's different schematics. And you can see, there's different schematics taken out of where you get all these fractures. And a lot of times, they're not all hydraulic connected. There are zones, or my highway scenario, that if you've got bedrock fractures in one area here, you can, you can take and actually drill over here and you're in a totally different bedrock fracture system. Or looking at this one, that if someone dropped on in between these fracture flow systems, they wouldn't even hit a fracture. And that's where a lot of these low-flow wells come from, is they're being put in between these fracture flow systems and getting low flows. I feel real sorry. I get dozens and dozens of calls from property owners every year about my well's drying up, my water's dropping. And majority of the time, it's the well sighted wrong, or the well efficiency's bad, the well construction's bad. I, I feel, I, I deal with many people every year regards to this. So that is general view of what's going on out there. There isn't one bucket of water that everybody's got a straw into and just sucking out the same straw. They could be, as the lady said here, one, one neighbor could be hitting one fracture, and the next neighbor over is in between and hits nothing. Low flow. And the next one over has the eighty gallon permitted well. So, it could be all within hundreds of yards. I, I've had people drill wells, get a trace of water. We run the survey I'm going to talk about here in a second. Hundred feet away, we're getting thirty gallons per minute. Because we hit the bedrock fracture. Uh, can we go, I'm going to kind of skip the next two because it says, well, let's go to the next slide real quick. So this is the summary of all those well logs. All the well logs came that we talked about, and Bob mentioned some that weren't in there. That was a direct download from the IDWR database. So it's what was available to the state. And what the state represents as in the wells. And just to let you know, so everything within a half mile radius using, using the data that's in the state database. Eighty-eight wells in this five hundred and ten acre area has an average GPM of nineteen point four six gallons per minute. So this is what we look at when we do these initial state analysis on hydrogeology. We look at the existing available data. Um, a quarter mile radius of the site is eighteen point six gallons per minute. This is average, all wells, from wells that are zero. Some are up at eighty gallons per minute. Section nineteen, um, has twenty-three point three nine, section twenty, which is down in here where the main site is. Uh, seventeen, and then section seventeen and eighteen, which is the northern site where a lot of the complaints are coming from people that they're losing water, has the lowest average GPM of fifteen gallons per minute. So the further north you go, the lower average we get. Okay, can we jump to the, not the graph, but the one after that? So why do we go out there and do this? And this is what I talked, I talked about at the last meeting. We actually run what we call an EMS survey. This is the way to locate wells in this type of, of hydrogeologic setting in order to try to assure you get a well that's not in between the fractures and only getting one or two or three gallons per minute. So we run this off, we actually fly a satellite over the property, run an EMS, uh, analysis o- over the bedrock. It actually maps out where the fractures are at depth in the ground that are, that have water in it. Then we go out to the site with a VLF technology, very low frequency geophysics, and actually verify and pin the depth to where that first fracture is hosting water. And I kind of, in my, in my original analysis, even before we did the EMS, I estimated that we're probably going to hit groundwater, our first fracture's about four hundred feet. And that was from looking at well logs, looking at scatter plots, all that stuff. Um, even the EMS from the satellite said it was going to be about three thirty to three fifteen. So, so the satellite kind of agreed with what we thought the depth was. And we actually mapped and put a stake in the ground of where the best is, best location is to hit a fracture at depth in order to intercept one of those bedrock fractures. This was one of my recommendations in the report, uh, the original report. And usually when I get into complex systems like this, I usually recommend these. And I've run these, uh, sat over these sites, EMS satellite surveys, I've run close to three hundred sites. And I've only missed water twice. Only twice have we gotten a result. And both of those were in some Mesozoic, uh, dolomite deposits with no crust. So, this is a very proven technology. Been using it for about fourteen years. It's been getting a lot better over the years. And this is what, when I get those calls from people, this is the first thing I recommend they do. Go out and run this EMS. It's pretty reasonable cost from the company that runs the satellite now. It's about ten percent of the cost of what it was fourteen years ago. Um, and they can get this and pinpoint these down and, and they'll hit water. We can't tell the exact yield, like the other gentleman said, till you actually put the well in the ground. But this gives you the best available science to date to pinpoint where water is. The code doesn't require this. This is just a smart planning effort. Uh, nobody wants to go out and drill a well and not hit it, like what happened at the site. And I'm going to go to the next one. So. So yes, as we were coming in to the last hearing, I was finding out the, the driller that went on the property didn't believe hydrogeologists and EMS technology. So he said, let's drill a well. And it's kind of hard to see. It's kind of right off in there. Let me look at this one. But off, off the flow lines, not these dots of where we recommended he drilled up in here. Totally missed the flow line that the EMS suggested. So, yeah, he, he got a crappy well.
Let me pause you for a moment. Define EMS.
Uh, electromagnetic survey. That's the sat, the satellite. And I think we haven't closed that report in the file, right? Yeah, it's been submitted into the file, the actual company that runs the satellites. So, yeah, so that was kind of a dumb mistake. Um, and I was kind of not happy when I heard about it. But, um, so the well that was drilled out there, and I'm going to talk a little bit more detail about that in a second. Let's go to the next. How am I doing my? So this is a good weighted average. Um, a, a lot of times I'll take the data of the wells.
Okay, so you, excuse me, you've got two minutes. I'm going to add three to that because ordinarily, if you were testifying, you'd get your own three minutes. So you've got five left. Go.
Okay, because this might be helpful to a lot of people here, too. You can actually see, these dots, the heavier dots are actually where the weight of where the heavier wells are. And as you can see, uh, this is based off the GPS locations of the centroid within the IDWR database. And they're not always precisely where the well is, but in general, it's in the centroid of the quarter, quarter section. And we kind of see where those higher wells are, the type trend, almost like that EMS map I just showed you. So even a passive historical data is showing that those trends are there, and the people outside these red and yellow dots are not getting the data. Fractures. Uh, go to the next, um, two maps down. So here we go. So what is this map showing? Here's the property with the EMS overlay that where we've mapped the fractures with the satellite. And with the, with the USGS topographic map overlay on it, shaded for elevation. Red, higher elevation, green, lower elevation.
Those are contour lines?
Contour lines. So if you're looking at that, so the red is six hundred plus feet or higher. And as we grind down to zero is the kind of whitest color. So everything's graining up higher, up the hill, to the ridgeline, to the north, northwest, and to.
Shallower.
To the south. So, all the people who are claiming up here, they're all higher in elevation. And if I go to the next map, if you match up some of the wells with some of the property owners, like this cross in shows here, we tried to match the wells up best we could with the homes north of the site, coming across our site, and down across the drainage. Here's a topographic wave map as a cross section. This is Mr. Haynes' well. And then going further north up, up the thing. So going up the hillside. These are the two first proposed wells represented by that point and that point are EMS number two and five. The groundwater table in these wells is higher than the ground elevation at our site. Higher in these wells here on the well logs, it's kind of hard to see, eighty and sixty gallons per minute. Next well up, six gallons per minute. Next well's up, twenty, twenty and thirty, I believe. Good fracture zone. In between, good fracture zone again. What, what's? When I recommended this, when I was originally looking at the, the well logs, uh, I wanted to get below everybody here. I didn't want to get any influence from these people. That's why I recommended drilling the minimum of four hundred at the site. Get down into some deeper fractures. They're there, and you won't be in direct hydraulic continuity with these people. So get out of the shallow stuff, get into the deep stuff. I like those better anyways because you get more regional recharge into, into the fracture flow system. The shallower wells are more localized, and as you go up the hill, you're at the top of the ridge. Your recharge is limited to that area at the top of the ridge, where when you're down here in a lower area, you've got a larger area of recharge, recharging your wells. Can we go to that one again? This is the well they drilled, which kind of, even with this well. Um, go to, can you go to this one right there?
This one?
Yeah.
Seventeen?
So here's the well log, um, that they, they drilled out there, that they went down to eleven fifty-five feet. But just even looking at this data in regards to the Kukui County Code, six inch well holds one and a half gallons per foot. Well has a thousand fifty-five feet of well storage, casing storage, one minute. Um, so, so if I pump five gallons meter for four hours, as according to code, in the well, without even getting recharged, I meet the county code. It's there, it's storage in the well. So, and then also, if you go to the fifteen hundred gallons per day, the recharge of three gallons per day is forty-three hundred gallons per day. So it meets those codes without even having to do anything. But we even had an engineer look at the well, and he recommended you do, and you still should put a three thousand gallon system in at this to meet the, to meet all the codes. If I can go now to the last, I think our second to last line. Um, let's go to, yeah, that one right there. So what we have out there with this cross section is a perfect textbook example of what, what you see. Open up any textbooks. You're hitting different fracture zones that are isolated from each other, and the people are hitting up the low-yield wells, are putting wells in between the fractures. They hit small, small zones. So it's my professional opinion that there's enough data to go out there and develop wells for a, for, for, for home shore class.
Okay, so I've got, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
How long has the EMS technology been around?
Uh, well, it's been, the EMS technology's been around a long time because it used to be used in the mining industry a lot to map out.
But I mean, for this application?
We, we started using it, I, uh, thirteen, fourteen years ago. Yep.
Okay, so when I looked at the well logs, some of these wells were drilled at least ten years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So the technology might not have been readily available. It might have been too expensive.
It's too expensive.
Okay. So.
For residential uses. We used to use it a lot to site larger wells.
Okay. So then, how would you explain? People's, how would you explain the decline, seeming decline in, in the water availability for the people that testified tonight?
Well, one is, as you go up the hill, and I would agree, you're getting, so your recharge area to your well is getting smaller. And if you develop in the top of the hill more, that's where your issues occur. You think, if you look at the cross section, water with water on a potentiometric head slope that we use in the bedrock fracture aquifer system, that we use the dynamic head, because even if you hit groundwater at four hundred feet, you may have a water table of fifty feet beneath, beneath the ground. That's the pressure head. But you can still get slope. So even in a slope like this, any water withdrawn from here is downgrading of the other wells. They're getting the leftover of what's being used up above. Now, the people that meet the area is that they would have to be if there are some other people, well, it's like the gentleman that had the well right next to it, um, that had three gallon a minute, I think he said. Half gallon a minute? You know, he's probably in this area, in an area where there's no fractures. He just didn't hit a significant fracture zone. And it's just sighted wrong. The well is just sighted wrong.
So are you suggesting that if this were approved or any future wells that employ the tech, the EMS technology and get into the fracture zones, that it would not have an impact to the wells already in place?
Not to the, not to the wells up above. Well tables definitely not above. It, it's like, it's like things are going down slope on a potentiometric head. Things are flow, high, high head to low head.
Right.
You can't, if you take stuff below, you're not depriving from above. You got the leftover from what's passed from above.
Right, understood.
So, um, if, and the other thing is too, is that the, the wells would have to be in the same fracture system. So, it's kind of hard to say that which ones, and I kind of look at these, I can kind of group them just generally, you know. Uh, a sixty and an eighty gallon per minute well, Mr. Haynes' well, an eighty gallons per minute, is not in the same fracture flow system as a six gallon per minute well. It's just hydrogeologically not. What do you say?
I, I, I think what I'm trying to get at is that if the technology were not readily available or too expensive, and those wells are in place and they are where they are, why is it not natural to assume that any further drilling would have an adverse impact?
It would have to have, yeah, it would have to be.
No, no, please, folks, stop.
It would have to be in the same fracture flow system.
Okay.
That's what, I, I'm not denying it. It would have to be in that same linear flow system.
Okay.
Um, but then the question is, is what's impairment? If I had a chance, I can go to this slide right here. No, what, what is impairment?
Which one?
Uh, the, this one. The, the one right in front.
Oh, sure.
Um, this, this is data Mr. Haynes presented to you earlier, shown graphically. Mr. Haynes, uh, well, the data is okay, but it's relative data because it's all dynamic water data. I.e., he pumps the well, pumps it, pumps it, and then takes a measurement. But in between these measurements, as a hydrogeologist, those numbers are kind of meaningless unless the same amount is pumped every year. So one year, if you pump a thousand gallons a month, um, next year you pump two thousand gallons per month, those two numbers are not significant to each other. But the one key thing about Mr. Haynes' data is that if you look every year, it rebounds. He's getting rebound every year. Boom, bounces up. And even after two thousand fifteen, which was a drought year, he's still got a significant rebound. And then seventeen, even got back up to where some of the older data was. So he's getting rebound. He's getting the stores back in. Um, and he just had a hole in the data here, so, um, we couldn't tell. But even after two thousand twenty, which we all know was a drought year, this, this last year, um, two, two years ago, he got a significant rebound even after that drought where, what, we didn't have rain for.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Leslie Bill, do you have any questions for Mr. St. Goddard?
I think, um, you, I think it was asked and answered about if, um, new wells are drilled on these four sites, if, as long as they're not in the same fracture line, then it's not going to affect that.
Yes. It, it's all, it's, it's kind of hard to explain. It's, it's all, it's all related to storage of the aquifer. So, um, and that's getting into a lot of different calculations. But typically, that's done when the well goes in and then the testing of the well can occur.
Right. Thank you.
That's when the impairment issue can be determined.
Uh, just so that I have it straight in my mind, if these new wells were to be drilled, how would we know whether or not they're in the same fracture zone as existing wells? Or, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, actually, well, the EMS sort of tells us that.
Okay, all right.
And that's why we spaced them out across the property, so they weren't all in one.
Fair enough. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, then, so that was very, very informative. Appreciate it. Okay, so in opposition, we're going to shift gears now. In opposition to the appeal, um, we have Mister Preston. Is it Ramsey?
Yeah, I was going to.
Okay, so I guess we're all done then. Okay, thank you. All right, then. And so that concludes our, uh, public testimony. And let's see, where are we now? So, Mister Portman, you get to rebut. So, Mr. Porman, you get to rebut.
So you get fifteen minutes to rebut, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. A couple of observations. And some housekeeping. I wanna make sure that my slideshow and Bob Haynes' documents get exhibit references.
Yours, Scott, is being one thousand. And Mr. Haynes?
One thousand one.
Well, I actually have, yeah, monitor of Bob Haynes' well, be one thousand one.
So we have his map, but there's a, there's a spreadsheet that goes with the map. It wasn't displayed, but we'll get those in a minute. Okay. Mr. St. Goddard provided a lot of data. Uh, I'm not sure all of his data is valid. Uh, for example, um, he's got gallons per minute averages of different areas, you saw the chart he put up. That, that's based on well logs. Uh, when they were drilled, it's not current conditions, does not take into account any of the decline that's occurred since those wells were drilled. So, uh, and I, and I think the overwhelming testimony from the folks that own the wells is that their wells are declining in production. So, uh, yeah, a snapshot of average gallons per minute of an area from well logs, it's not today's conditions. So, bear that in mind. Um, Mr. St. Goddard was good enough to admit that if new wells are drilled in these same fractures that are supplying existing wells, they, it will affect the existing wells. That's just how it works. Um, I, I think maybe something that was skipped over is that you've got an upper well, a well high on the hill at a certain depth, and then you've got a well on this twenty acres at a lower depth that somehow, even if they're in the same fractures, not going, the lower well's not going to affect the upper well because water always flows downhill. Okay, well, if you... We could go back to that, but if you remember, in the upper wells, like Bob's well, uh, Mr. Schweitzer's well, were good producers when they were drilled. They have a high static water level, meaning the water's being forced up the well because of pressure. Now, you punch a hole down below and you're in the same fracture, you're relieving some of that pressure because you're drawing it out. And so the static level in Mr. Schweitzer or Mr. Haynes' wells will drop because there's another well that's drawing from the same source and relieving some of that pressure that's forcing the water up otherwise. Can't get around this stuff. He talks about the technology, EMS, electromagnetic surveying, very low frequency surveying, to find not only where the fractures are, but at what depth you're gonna find the water. It's almost, I think he calls it precise in his... "We can pinpoint the depth and location of bedrock fractures." That's in his report, page thirteen. Well, if they can do it, why didn't they? Do you really believe the well driller disregarded the instructions of the hired expert and the property owner and just drilled where he wanted to drill instead? And ignore all of this technology? And they just, oops, missed it? This is a, over a thousand-foot-deep well. Who's paying for that? Are they gonna pay the well driller who ignored their expert's instructions? Or maybe the well driller drilled where he was supposed to drill? And despite all the technology, they got three gallons a minute after going almost three times what St. Goddard recommended they would need to go, four hundred feet? So, take his word for it, I guess, is the message of the day. Commissioners, you've got you've got two unknowns. Well, you've got, you've got two variables. If I may. Subdivision? Yes or no? That's your, that's your decision you have to make here. Is there adequate water? Yes? Or no? If there's adequate water and you approve the subdivision, no harm, right? That's okay. No harm. If there's adequate water. If there's not adequate water and you approve the subdivision, worst-case scenario. Why? Because there's gonna be four lots. This developer's gonna sell to unsuspecting innocent buyers. They'll drill wells, or try to, and strike out, potentially. Or worse, they can get a well that produces five gallons a minute. They build a house in reliance on that well, and then a few years later, guess what? The neighbors or the homeowner's well has now dried up. Just like all these folks that testified, that's exactly what's been happening. That's worst-case scenario. You've got four potential homeowners now with dry wells. Or worse, they're getting sued in a delivery column because their wells are the newest wells on the block. All the priority rights around them are shutting them down. Okay, what's another option? There's adequate water and you deny the subdivision. That's a mistake. That's a bad decision. But who suffers? Financial loss to the developer. That's the consequence of making this bad decision. No water, no to the subdivision, no harm. That's a good decision. That's a good decision. You gotta choose between these two. That's really what you have to decide. Now, what's more likely? From the evidence before you, from the testimony of firsthand property owners, not the opinions of Mr. St. Goddard? Which, by the way... This is what he says about his own report. Page fourteen. "The findings and conclusions presented herein should not be assumed to be accurate representation of present-day conditions, but only interpretations based on professional judgment at the time our reports were developed. This assessment only presents a professional opinion as to what type of aquifer may be encountered beneath the site, does not warranty any quantities of water which may be withdrawn." You've got that opinion against the firsthand experiences of neighbors up and down, above and below the subject property. And they're all telling you the same thing. Their wells are drying up. They've had to drill new wells, they've had to hydrofract. They've had to go deeper. It keeps happening. They've had to buy systems. You've got people that haven't even built yet, that have decided, do we need to just unload this property while we still can? And lose our investment? Commissioners, consider this worst-case scenario against this scenario. Which is worse? Who suffers the consequences? Innocent purchasers? Or the developer? The developer made their choice, they bought this property. They're not entitled to anything other than one well for one house on that twenty-two acres. That's what they're entitled to. And you can't stop them from getting it. They have a constitutional right to have a well on that twenty-two acres. They didn't need your permission to drill the first one. But they do need your permission to quadruple the risk and the problem that will result if you guess wrong about what is there adequate water in that area. And I don't envy you because nobody knows the right answer. We're gonna find out, to the extent we don't already know, in the years to come, if development continues, if all these other vacant lots get houses with wells, it's only gonna make it worse. And pretty soon, we'll all know the right answer because it will be unavoidable. The evidence will be overwhelming. And we can look back and say, oops, we shouldn't have approved that four-lot subdivision because we just made it worse than it already was. Or we can look back and say, maybe that would've been okay. That guy didn't make a bunch of profit. That's really what you're deciding between. Profit for the developer? Or, or dry houses? And the people that suffer that consequence. I think it was already said, uh, Mr. Haynes said, you know, there's language in your ordinance. It's there for a reason. It's a standard the applicant has to meet. They didn't meet it. Their own well, despite all of their technology. They missed. Now, that's on them. But do you want to force the next, the, the four families that buy these four lots to suffer the same consequence? Just... If you're in a hole, the first thing you do is stop digging. This area is in a hole as far as water's concerned. And stop digging. Don't approve another four lots. It may not be the right decision, but it's better than this one. You just have to weigh the, the potential risk, the consequences. Uh, if I have any time left, I don't know if Bob or...
What do we have?
Dave.
Betsy.
Five and a half minutes.
Might, might want to respond.
We've got five and a half minutes remaining.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Commissioners, there's a couple of points that I wanna make about the presentation that Mr. St. Goddard made. He talks about an average of nineteen, eighteen, nineteen gallons a minute across the sections there. And it's, it's a totally meaningless number because it doesn't represent today's conditions. And let me explain to you how that fits. Mr. Baumann, I believe, uh, talked earlier. His well, when it was drilled, produced twenty-five gallons a minute. So it's part of that eighteen, nineteen gallons a minute that was reported as an average. His well was test-pumped last summer at three-quarters of gallon a minute. So, that twenty-five is billed into the average, but it doesn't represent what's real. Mr. Nelson, uh, his well, I believe, when it was drilled, was listed at fifty gallons a minute. It went dry. It's the one that I was referring to earlier that, that my neighbor had called me and said, I'm out of water. What do I do? Well, the average at that point in time was twenty-five. Half of fifty and zero. And my point is that those numbers mean absolutely nothing at all. Take my own well, also. It was, the well driller, I think, on the original log said a hundred gallons a minute. I had to do some remedial work on it and it came back at eighty. I can tell you right now, the graph that Gene put up, uh, I'm pumping thirty gallons a minute and I'm going down. So my well's not really producing even thirty gallons a minute at this point. One other thing I wanna say about well construction. Mr. St. Goddard has indicated they need to drill to four hundred feet. Well, what happens when they hit a fracture zone at a hundred and twenty-five or two hundred feet? Do they stop? Um, I can tell you the developer's gonna tell them to stop. There's not any point in going to four hundred feet if you've got water. An option maybe is to, uh, drill the well to four hundred feet and case off all of that before you get to four hundred feet. That's not likely to happen. But the point is that if, if that, if that were to occur, the only way to accomplish that is to put in unperforated casing and seal it into a confining layer so that those upper fractures are not, uh, let off with water. What's happening out here is that people are chasing water. If you look at, uh, one other point that I wanted to make. The map you have, she was red numbers, red parcels on it. The spreadsheet is, uh, a listing of what the problems were associated with those, those parcels. Each one of those, and there's a parcel number on that spreadsheet. So if you wanna see where it is, you can, you can, uh, do it that way.
Betsy, how much time do we have left?
Two twenty-eight.
Please make it brief, sir.
Okay. The evidence is that we in this area are chasing water. You have a well, it goes dry. You either deepen it or you drill to a deeper depth to get water. At some point in time, that's gonna come to an end. Because the, the actual evidence of what's going on here is that the recharge in this, in this area is less than what we're pumping. And it doesn't make any difference how fractured the area you put your well in. When it goes dry, it goes dry. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a couple of questions, Bob.
Yes.
Um, do you have any experience with this EMS technology?
As a matter of fact, I do. Um, I set on a well over in the Hauser area. The recommendations were not produced by the firm that Gene, uh, used. They indicated that we were gonna get water at two hundred and fifty feet. We actually got it about three fifty. So, the point that's been made about the accuracy of these methods of determining where water is, is, is good. I'm not, I'm not disputing whether or not that has some value. But it only has value if the volume of water that you're pumping is less than what's being recharged. Mr. St. Goddard's report is really high on geology. He's, he's got number, diagrams in there about fractures and all that. It's really short on hydrology, and that's what the crux of this matter is. One other comment that I wanna make. This, to me, has never, ever been about whether or not they would find water on that property. I knew they would. Even at, at the depth they, uh, had with, with that existing well. It's always been about what the impact on the existing users is.
Okay, so, stop right. Leslie, you had another question?
Oh, just that, um, has anybody in that area used this technology to help them?
You mean in, in the area where?
Mm-hmm.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Okay. Bill, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so that, that concludes our, uh... Anything? Jonathan? I don't wanna lock anybody out. Okay. Yeah, go right ahead, please.
I just wanna say two things.
You need to come to a microphone.
Or you can, yeah, either way.
These will be very quick. The documents are, you have everything in there. Just to be, to correct the factual record. The drill, the well was drilled on the subject property before the EMS was completed, to be clear. So it was missed. The driller couldn't tell them where to go with the EMS, it was not completed.
Please, folks.
Okay, folks, please. Let the attorney, go, go right ahead, Ms. Dow.
And the dates are in, I mean, the EMS reports would support that with the dates that are in the report. The second thing was, it was suggested that we would stop at two hundred feet if we hit water. County has already imposed as a condition of approval that we must follow the depth requirements recommended by Mr. St. Goddard. So we have to, or we can't get our approval, go below four hundred feet minimum. It's required. We also have to give at least two hundred feet spacing, and we would have to prove that to the county before obtaining final plot. So those are the two things I wanted to correct.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes the public testimony. Um, normally what happens at this time, folks, is once we complete the public testimony or the public hearing segment, it's all public hearing, really, is we entertain a motion to go into deliberations. When we enter deliberations, it is strictly the three of us. There is no comment, there's no interruptions. It's the three of us to debate, deliberate, whatever. We can certainly ask for comments or ask questions of staff for clarification purposes only, but in terms of opinions, they're only our own that matter at this point. However, due to the volume of information and the complexity, I think we might wanna defer deliberations. Is there, any thought on that?
Um, I, I would agree, and we can pick a date certain.
Okay, would you care to make a motion?
Uh, let me look at a date first.
Yeah. So what that means, folks, is we're not going to be deliberating tonight, so we won't be coming to a decision. We'll deliberate probably within the next, almost certainly within the next thirty days, uh, probably less than that, but let's see what Commissioner Duncan comes up with.
Um, there is the twenty-seventh. Right now, the CD calendar I have is, is clear. So January twenty-seventh would be two weeks, that would be enough time for me to decide.
Okay, that's, Bill, you okay with that?
Let me take a quick look.
Are we, and we're looking at the morning?
Um, yeah, just our nine AM, uh, community development.
I don't think we need more than an hour, do we?
No, I don't.
Okay, so, January twenty-seventh, nine AM?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait for the motion. Go ahead and put that in. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
All right, sending, uh, Betsy a, an email. Uh, so I move that we continue, uh, enter into and continue deliberations to January twenty-seventh at nine AM.
I second the motion.
Phil Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. We're deferring deliberations until January twenty-seventh at nine AM. Thank you, everyone, appreciate your participation and all the civility, which is not always the case, by the way. And, uh, do drive safely, have a good evening. The time is now eight thirteen, and the meeting is adjourned.